Alrighty, so I'm gonna call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, we'll start with our land acknowledgement. Uh, so, uh, we acknowledge that we are gathered on Treaty Eight First Nations territory and the longstanding presence of the elders and the ancestors of Treaty Eight. Through this acknowledgement, we extend recognition and respect, uh, to the B.C. Treaty Eight, uh, First Nations and all those who call the Peace Country. Alright, onto item number three, adoption of agenda. Recommendation that we adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a second here?
Second.
Second. Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
Aye.
Alrighty, so on to four, uh, adoption of minutes. Uh, four point one, uh, June eleventh, twenty twenty five, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Recommendation that council adopts the June eleventh, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented. Have a second here?
I'll second.
On the floor.
Second discussion. Um, so, as previously mentioned, um, I was not present for this meeting, therefore I can't certify that this is accurate recording of the meeting, therefore I have to vote in opposition. However, because of the, uh, you know, only available members present, um, it would be defeated, therefore I would recommend that we actually table this to the next available meeting.
Uh, and no matter if you're opposed and we're in favor, it would be... We got three, we got enough.
Whatever costs.
So, I'm gonna call the question. Uh, all those in favor? Or, Mayor Beach, do you have something?
Are we calling the question on tabling it until the next committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, I guess it's, we don't need to, because we got enough here. If you're in favor and I'm in favor, we've got, we can approve these minutes.
Yeah, uh, Councilor Rabel has already noted that he's not willing to vote in favor due to the fact that he was not here, and so if we, we were to vote in favor, that this would be defeated and then it would have to be reconsidered at a later date.
No.
It would not be easier at this point to defer.
Mayor Beach, two, but at three plus, uh, minus two, there's only one vote against it.
I think Mayor Beach is curious about the, uh, motion that's on the floor itself. My, my recall is, it's on the adoption of the minutes themselves.
Yes, and Councilor Wall has brought forward a motion to table.
The motion that was on the floor.
Yeah. Is not seconded, his motion is not on the floor.
Yeah, so it's on the floor, it's not seconded, so the motion that's on the floor right now is to adopt the meeting minutes as presented from June eleventh.
And then, so Councilor Rabel has noted that he would like to make this quick, uh, message deferring the meeting minutes until the next committee of the whole meeting, which I will second.
Again, maybe, and Madam Chair, maybe this is my ignorance, but, you know, in terms of the minutes themselves, given this is the committee of the whole meeting, it's my understanding that these minutes will go back to the regular meeting for final adoption regardless, is that correct?
They would.
So, you'll, you'll see them again.
Yeah, so I'm gonna call the question on, uh, so there was a second. Did you second his motion to table these?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the question on the motion to table these minutes. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Point of order, can I just get, sorry, can I just get some clarification? Are we tabling them or are we deferring them?
Okay, so Mayor Beach, for clarification, because you're having some technical difficulties here, the motion that is currently on the floor that you seconded is Counselor Rabel's motion to defer these minutes to our next committee of the whole meeting. That is the motion.
We are deferring them, okay, thank you.
This is the question that we're calling out, so all those in favor of deferring the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed to deferring the minutes? Myself, I'm opposed because we have enough here to move this forward and it's just wasting staff's time, so I want my opposition noted to this, and those are tabled.
Bring them back to consideration at the next regular.
At the next regular or at the next committee of the whole? Um, because it's gotta pass this, we go to the regular, so they come back to the next committee of the whole.
Okay, yeah, next committee of the whole.
Yep, next committee of the whole, they come back, okay. Uh, so item number five, introduction of late items, there's none. Uh, public hearings, none, delegations, none, unfinished business arising from the minutes, none. New business, nine point one, uh, the seniors' support service, M.O.U. Recommendation that council moves the Pouscoopie seniors' service, M.O.U., to the August twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
Second.
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 Alright, all those in favor? Alright.
Aye.
Thank you, let's carry. Uh, we're gonna move on to ten, correspondence, is there any correspondence anybody would like to lift? Yeah, Counselor Rabel.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah, one sec, Mayor Beach, Counselor Rabel, you were first.
Uh, okay, well, then ten point one, in regards to the, to the Allops.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Okay, um, the, I guess the real question is, is it asking the village to reach out to our local health authority to encourage them to participate in this provincial program? Is that the correct understanding?
A possible.
Are we to action them?
My, my reading is that it was encouraging, you know, different communities within the P.R.R.D. to, it was offering a few different options on how local governments could, uh, take part in, you know, promoting their communities as being ready to retain or to recruit healthcare professionals. There's opportunities to, you know, identi- identify in a letter to partner with other local governments on, um, you know, welcoming folks into, you know, their, their communities, et cetera. Do you have options there? Do you folks have any? I can go a little bit more, I can.
Um, we've always advocated for healthcare and locum folks to come stay in the village, and we've always encouraged, we've always focused on ensuring that the services we provide and the infrastructure we provide is of high quality and attracts people to live here. Curious as to if we are to take this approach or if this is purely just informational?
I was, you know, the letter itself does read as information, but it's a word it is, it does reference a couple of, uh, voluntary actions that Pous could take if they wished to, so information seems most appropriate from a point of view, if you folks do wish to, if anything, or to prioritize that, we can definitely get a report back.
Mayor Beach, do you have anything you wanna speak to on this?
Yeah, no, this is, this is definitely coming from the Minister of Health, um, and this is definitely talking about different things that they're doing for, for recruitment throughout the province and as stated, the United States. Um, I think that because this is already coming from the office of the Minister herself, um, they are doing the work and just giving municipalities sort of that opportun- tuning duty to take part and stay informed and, you know, help continue to spread awareness and information around recruitment, so I think a letter to the Minister might not be the best way to go at this point in time. Um, if Counselor Rabel is interested in, um, really pushing this conversation or, or getting the word out there, um, we could go on to the Minister of Health page or the Northern Health page and share some of their recruitment efforts into the community so that people are, um, aware.
Um, simply in response to that, this letter mentions that our local health authority, uh, may not have fully responded to this, I would wait for their action, and then we can go from there, and then attend, you can see them, see the conversations there, bring it forward from there.
Alright, so at this current time, no action, let us.
Yes.
Alright, alright, so we're gonna move on to, uh, Mayor Beach, you got anything for ten point one before we move on to ten point two?
Are we receiving this for information?
Yes, do we need a motion to receive that for information?
Yeah. I put motion on the floor that we, we received ten point one for, for information.
Second. Alright, all those in favor, I guess? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, ten point two, uh, Oventive Tours, so the recommendation is that council receives correspondence, uh, from Oventive dated July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, uh, so, uh, in regards to attending the onsite field tours for discussion and to let staff know, so there was an email that was sent out. Uh, can I get a second here, all of you?
Second.
So, yeah, there was an email, uh, sent out on this, uh, with some prospective dates for council. Uh, I believe staff wanted us to reply back with whatever dates that we were available, if we were available, uh, and they will supply us with the PVE that we need if we don't have it, and there is some dates. Uh, yeah, Mayor Beach?
Um, so I will be, I will be attending this site tour, um, under my P.R.R.D. role, so I'm not available, it would be nice to have a member of council, um, attending on behalf of the village Pouscoopie, just because we do have, um, a few things happening in and around roughly five kilometers outside of Pous, and so it, it would be really, really great just to kinda get some of those, those tours, uh, engaged with some of the Oventive staff and just really continue to create that relationship and that communication, as I'm gonna be there in regards to my P.R.R.D. position, um, I am going to be acting from that hat, so I would like, if, if a member of council, council is available to attend on behalf of the village, I would really like to see that.
Yeah, so because it's part of my portfolio, actually, because I've got the oil and gas portfolio right now, so I'll actually, I gotta look at the dates, and I believe seventeen is the date that, uh, was the one that I can probably think.
Seventeen.
Yeah, I'll send you an email tonight to confirm that. Alright, so we have that written. Um, yeah, so, receive that for information?
Um, if I may, Chair, um, would you like the motion on, on the floor to state that you attend on behalf of the village Pouscoopie so that you can correspond and represent us while there?
It's my portfolio already, so do we really need a motion for that?
I'm just belittling.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, Counselor Rabel.
I, I would be interested in attending if available on the seventeenth. I think it's more the mayor to understand what's on the local region, um, if yourself wished to, you had representative.
Because I read it, it's an open invitation to us, there's no cost involved to the village, so it's not really something, we're not spending money, so we don't really need a motion for it.
It seems like an email goes to Oventive, probably C.C. and goes to staff that somebody is interested in attending, um, but I would support, uh, Member Beach's motion.
Yeah, if you guys wanna make a motion, feel free to, but I don't, I don't feel it's necessary unless staff feels it's necessary that we have a motion.
Um, or have you? It's, uh, always clear if you have a motion.
So, somebody wants to bring that motion forward?
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties.
Yeah, so if you want that motion, one of you guys wanna bring that motion forward that, uh, myself and Counselor Rabel attend?
Okay, I put forward the motion that, are you looking for any member of council that wishes to, to attend or just?
Yeah, it's to any member of council, because that leaves it open for the two gentlemen on our tier tonight.
Perfect, that, um, any member of council that wishes to attend the Oventive site tour be allowed to behead, to attend on behalf of the village Pouscoopie.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright. Alrighty, uh, we're gonna move on to ten point three, anybody wanna lift that, where we'll just receive for correspondence? Right, and a second, or just receive correspondence?
Second.
Alrighty, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna work our way through these, because there's a few that need to be lifted, so. Uh, ten point four, U.B.C.M. Asset Management Planning Grant Award, so recommendation that council receives the U.B.C.M. Asset Management Planning Approval Agreement, signed July thirty-first, twenty funding, uh, twenty twenty-five regarding the approval of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, worth of information.
Second.
Uh, staff, are you guys able to highlight anything on that?
First.
I know you're new to the world.
Thank you, uh, Chair, a little assistant file that I made to catch up with, uh, Mr. Kurriata, so maybe I'll get it off to him.
Yeah, just, uh, kinda continue some of the work that was, um, you know, undertaken by, uh, previous CFO, McFail, when he was doing, uh, that work, and further prioritizes some strategic pieces from asset management perspective there, um, and just some extra money to be able to, to do some further dating and, and replying of the work that Mike had hired, so. Um, Jimmy, anything there that you would add, you know, to that grant?
This is what the grant is for.
Yeah, lots to, uh, lots to still unpack there with the asset management side of your email, I mean, there.
Uh, the asset management planning has taken a long time, taken investment, um, this is fantastic that we're receiving this, this is definitely something to celebrate and to note, just out of curiosity, a ballpark of how much more does this help us move forward in this project?
That's a great question, um, ultimately, like, I, I feel we're at a place here now where we're gonna handle on, as, village assets in particular, like useful life woods remaining or stuff that's, uh, that's currently owned, um, and then I guess highlighting potential opportunities for replacement when it comes to, um, to items that are reaching the end of their life as well, um, so I, I think this just affords us a little bit more time to kind of further prioritize and strategize around what next, particularly, the other piece there I think that's important to highlight is the, um, the P.R.A. Fair Share Five-Year Plan is up and, and we have to do here in October, so these are the work that staff has to do, that will be primarily centered around, uh, not only asset management, but a significant portion of fair share money or P.R.A. money to, uh, to operate as well, so, um, this grant allows us to carry continuing some of those pieces there. I'll highlight a timeline, ideally, I'd like to get it sorted here, um, it's a kinda interesting question, I do, my ideal piece would be, we're going into, uh, the next budget season, having these pieces from an asset management perspective highlighted from a five-year plan, so we know what we need to think about in terms of investment of, uh, reserve funds and as well as using those reserve funds in the future to finance future asset purchases, that would be my goal in this budget season, to have a pretty clear picture of what that looks like for us in the next five years, so.
Thank you. Alright, so all those in favor, receiving for information?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so ten point five, uh, Ministry of Forests and Heritage Conservative Act Transformation Project, so there's some upcoming engagement opportunities, so the recommendation that council receives a Ministry of Forests H.C.A.T.P. Upcoming Engagement Letter, uh, dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five for information.
Second.
Alright.
Uh, so I see that there was a recent and dedicated local engagement session on August twelfth, that was just yesterday, I'm not sure if anyone was able to attend, um, but it seems like we've got some coming up August twentieth, and then September seventeenth, which might interact with the Oventive Tour, um, so, I'm, I'm just curious, it, you know, it's always good to, uh, have these things updated, um, heritage conservation's important, and we do have some potential or existing heritage assets within the village, and I think it's very important and pertinent that we do engage with this, was anybody able to attend the thing yesterday, and if not, who we have for, say, August twentieth coming up?
Yeah, myself, I wasn't able to attend, Mayor Beach, uh, you didn't attend that event, did you?
No, I was driving to Calhoun just yesterday, so I was not able to go to it.
No.
Or attend it via Zoom anyway.
That is something we can put up to council to see, uh, who's interested in, uh, work, uh, with the upcoming dates, and then I think this would be just up and, uh, look at, possibly bring it back for our regular council meeting for further discussion, uh, because then by then.
Yeah.
So, I'll make the recommendation that we bring ten point five, uh, back to our regular council meeting for further discussion.
Second.
Second. So, all those in favor bringing ten point five, uh, to regular council meeting, uh, for further discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Chair?
Yeah?
If I may, I'd just like to note it, I can't attend the August twentieth meeting either, as I have an interprovincial meeting with the Peace River Regional District, so I will not be available on that date, the only day I can attend this meeting is September seventeenth, so I would just like to have that, that noted as well.
Uh, yeah. Alright, uh, we're gonna move on to ten point six, anybody wanna lift ten point six? Sorry, recommendation received for information?
Second.
Yeah, we're receiving ten point six for information.
Okay, so, um, there's no discussion regarding moving this to the regular in case it would like to be endorsed?
Well, we have to discuss it first, that's why we're receiving it, and I asked if anybody wanted to lift it, and we can't speak about it until somebody seconds receiving it.
I seconded it.
So, now it's seconded, so now you can discuss it.
Yep, that's.
Do you wanna bring ten point six forward to the regular council meeting?
Uh, is there an interest amongst council that, that is attending U.B.C.M. that they would like to endorse this, from, just a reminder, if you endorse something, hopefully it'll end up on the floor and you'll have an opportunity to speak on, speak in regard to it.
Counselor Rabel? Thank you, I appreciate the spirit of this motion, um, I find it rather intriguing, it talks about forested watershed communities, I'm assuming with my limited hydrology and training that most communities are reliant on water sources that are coming from forested areas, and if there's a forest fire that has pollutants and contaminants in that watershed, obviously it's gonna go to your treatment plant, my understanding is, are the treatment plants not equipped to that, to handle that sudden influx of pollutants, because they're proposing the purchase of one to three of these portable treatment units that can be deployed if needed to aid in this, um, I find it interesting that the logic they're going for is when they, that these contaminants enter the water stream that contaminate the water supply, the existing treatment plants can't manage it, however, I see value in the purchase of the portable treatment plants for deployment in communities where their treatment facilities have burned down or been impacted by the fires, so although I appreciate the spirit of it, and I think that investment in these kind of assets that can be deployed to communities where their treatment plants have been impacted by forest fires, I think that makes a lot of sense, um, but the logic leading up to it that somehow the treatment plants can't handle this contamination, I'm a bit confused on, however, I'm not an expert to that, uh, my understanding is that the Dawson Plant invests in very high level filters that can deal with, you know, the regular particulates and contaminant that's present in any watershed, um, although I don't really fully understand yet or agree with the logic leading up to this resolution, I do agree with the outcome, the intended outcome of it, of this deployable asset can be given to, or lent to communities, however, I'm assuming that this might end up just on the island in the lower mainland, I don't know how quickly they could truck it up to a community up here, so, I'm, long and the short, I'm in favor of endorsing this versus not, but, uh, I don't know what the other members feel, and once again, it's, uh, money that's coming from somewhere, it's ultimately coming from taxpayers through the province, so.
So, the question I have is, do we want this moved to the regular council meeting?
For discussion. I make the motion to move this to the regular council meeting for further discussion and potential endorsement.
Go up, second or?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's carried.
Aye.
Alrighty, we're gonna move on to ten point seven, uh, U.B.C.M., uh, Conversations, uh, Official Opposition Meetings Opportunities, uh, so we've got an email, uh, with the opportunity to meet with, uh, official, uh, members of the opposition, so the recommendation is that council receives the U.B.C.M., uh, Conservative Caucus Invitation Letter dated August eighth, twenty twenty-five for information.
Second.
Second.
Alright, um, yeah, there might be a couple that we might wanna look at, so I'm gonna make the recommendation, uh, that we move this to the regular council meeting for further discussion as well.
Second.
Okay.
In regards to that, though, I just wanna make sure that these particular sessions don't impact other sessions, other meetings, we have a bunch of meetings scheduled, so obviously it'd be lovely to attend everything possible under the sun, I'm just curious if it interacts or interferes with other meetings we have, that's my concern, but we're fleshing up the schedule, honestly.
To your worship, uh, it'll definitely interact with, you know, distant programming, uh, we don't have, uh, no confirmations back on, Mayor Beach, you're sharing, you know, uh, confirmations back on some of our requests for meeting listeners, but.
Mayor Beach?
Um, I just wanna note that sometimes these breakfasts involve tickets, um, and so I'm, I'm not sure if we'd just like to rece, I know the motions are on the floor to move it to the regular council meeting, what we could potentially do is receive it for information, and then the council can take that information and let staff know if they would like to attend.
Yeah, oh, motions on the floor, so, there's a motion on the floor, so I'm gonna call that to vote, so all those in favor of moving this to the regular council meeting for further discussion?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed?
Aye.
You want your opposition noted?
Nope, I'm fine.
So, carries, we're gonna move, uh, ten point seven to the regular council meeting for further discussion, uh, so that brings us to end of correspondence, so that brings us to eleven, uh, Resolutions, so eleven point one, uh, the council resolution to support U.B.C.M.'s strategic priority funds and grant applications, so recommendation that council supports the resolution for U.B.C.M. Strategic Fund Priority Grant Application, uh, and I imagine that would be to be moved, yeah, so I'll go up, second or?
Second.
Alright, um, yeah, so I guess the biggest one with this, unless somebody wants to speak on it, uh, move forward with this application. Yeah, alright, I'll make the recommendation of moving eleven point one to the regular council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pick, so, vote, Mayor Beach?
I have a question regarding, um, the report for the, uh, re, the resolution, I think staff could, let me know, when, when it comes forward to the regular council meeting, um, can we look at each individual application rather than lumping them all into one, because if not, we're, we're gonna get into the issue where council's voting to move forward with the resolution, and it will be one lump, including the fire truck and potential expansion, can we look at separating those into different applications, please, just for transparency and clarification?
Uh, through the chair, that is, uh, something that we've, uh, we were just discussing this afternoon, and actually might be a requirement to the grant to have those resolutions separated out, they might, I, my understanding is they wanna see two different, uh, certified resolutions, but just something we got after posting this, and we'll correct before the regular.
Wonderful, thank you.
Alright, alright, so we're gonna move on to that, to move that over to, Counselor Rabel?
Do we require a motion to direct staff to attend to that, or I'm assuming that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay, thank you. And the way I read it was, it was the, the email that you guys sent, you guys, how we had it broke up into the two different streams.
Okay.
Alright, uh, so, for bylaws, we have a bylaws, so, pick square twelve, we're gonna move on to thirteen, administration reports, so thirteen point one, staff reports, uh, and, yeah.
To receive for information?
Yeah, is there anything anybody wants to lift, uh, for many of these staff reports or highlights?
I definitely, Chair, if I may, um, seeing as we have Mr. Kurriata, um, in the room, I think it would be beneficial to have him speak to his report as he is there.
Yeah. Counselor Rabel?
We can move all the other reports for in, information, I just don't wanna just receive him, his, I think it'd be nice to have him speak on it.
Yeah, Counselor Rabel?
I move to receive the fire department report and public works report for information.
Yeah, I'll second that, all those in favor receiving the public works and fire department reports for information?
Aye. Aye.
I'll make the recommendation that, uh, we receive the C.F.A.O. report. Second or?
Second. Question?
Alright, um, so, I guess a couple pieces I, I wanted to highlight, um, these reports would be inclusive primarily of all revenue and expenses to, uh, the end of June, I would feel confident with, there's still some stuff that's trickling in from kind of July, uh, ran trial balance, um, as of July twenty ninth, um, but even with science and stuff today, that goes back to July invoicing, um, on the page, I guess it would be page fifty-eight, the budget reports that has the, uh, nice little pie charts there and, and highlights the year-to-date budget variances, those budget variances are a reflection of current spending to what was adopted from a budget perspective, um, so looking at revenue, we're sitting at, we're having received, uh, sixty percent of, uh, what we were forecasting from a revenue perspective, uh, the primary piece that, uh, uh, would be not received yet would be any additional grant money, uh, that pertains to the Louvre Project, that would be kind of the big piece, um, and then sales services, so, uh, there we're talking about future buildings in relation to water and sewer, um, so those are kind of the two big pieces there, uh, investment income related stuff, uh, so actual money received to date is in the thirty-five thousand dollar range, we had a budget there of ninety, um, that last year we saw increase later in the year as we receive, uh, further grant monies from the Louvre Project that's at Bank Council, which is traditionally addressed at the later part of this year, so I would expect that we will see a further increase in that to fall more in line with budgeted amounts, um, in terms of collection municipal property taxes, uh, we're actually projecting just a little bit over, uh, what we were from a revenue perspective there, so the collection side of things has, has fallen in line with kind of what we were projecting from a budget perspective, so all in all, uh, revenue-wise, I would say we're, we're in a pretty good position, um, in terms of the. In terms of the core expenses, so the blue graph there that's on page fifty eight, um, in terms of general operating side of things. Um, some pieces that are a little bit concerning, uh, in relation to, so general government, uh, expenses. So that would be anything that's related to staffing and those types of things. Um, obviously with, with Matthew leaving here, Duncan coming on, there's gonna be some additional transitional pieces there, so something we'll have to keep an eye on. Overall, operating expenses are sitting at forty-three percent. We're just a little bit over halfway through the year, and so, uh, pretty much in line. Um, as we go further in the year, uh, we tend to accrue additional expenses, uh, particularly if we're looking at things. Like, uh, community to getting some pieces done, financial side of things, there's some additional costs there. Uh, there could be, if that goes through, some further additional cost pieces that are responsible for that. Could be a concern as we move, uh, further into the year. Um, however, from operational perspective, based on what we set aside and, and kind of allocated from an operations standpoint, I would say we're in a pretty healthy financial position right there, or right now. Um, final piece I just wanted to kind of touch on, uh, is in relation to capital. Um, the, uh, the two, the one report, I think that's kind of the best one, I've been kind of playing around with these a little bit. Uh, page fifty, fifty-nine and six, or sorry, sixty and sixty-one, I'll say, yeah. Sixty and sixty-one are just two different representations of, of the same information, essentially. Um, the capital projects, um, so on page sixty-one. Um, if we look at the second grouping summary by department, uh, some referred to at this piece here right now. Summary by department, um, I'll have to talk to Trina about this, but we've allocated, uh, some expenditure there from a capital perspective. That forty-four thousand nine forty-five is actually the mower, um, that we had budgeted for in the, in the budget. Um, their initial budget for the mower, uh, was forty-five thousand dollars, so pretty good, came in fifty-five dollars under budget on that. Yep, the, uh, that three hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and two dollar expense there is the trackless machine. Uh, which was initially budgeted at three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that came in, uh, slightly under budget as well. Um, and then water services piece there, two hundred and thirty-five thousand and, uh, eight twenty-eight is kind of the initial pieces, uh, related to primarily, I would say, urban systems. Uh, maybe a little bit from, uh, Procore when it comes to, uh, the ongoing project there. Um, so stuff that, uh, hasn't been purchased yet from a capital perspective, uh, there was two, uh, pieces, some S C B A, that's for the, uh, fire department. Uh, there's one piece that came off the budget, uh, and, uh, there's also some radio upgrades that for fire departments as well, that hasn't come through yet from an invoicing perspective. That's actually forecast within ninety-two thousand dollars, referring to there. And then there's some additional pieces that, uh, there, uh, Public Works is doing, uh, in particular Chat Blair around, uh, we had allocated two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for some color updates and appropriations. Uh, that falls under that transportation and transit services, uh, what's gonna be in there, uh, from a capital perspective. And then of course, the one point five million dollars is the remainder of, uh. Um, so capital wise, um, I, I say we're, we're tracking the right direction. There's, uh, some concern there, uh, with the outflow pipe, um, at the Lagoon, that's causing some grief. Um, I know staff's been working with, uh, urban systems and some pieces there, and trying to determine what the actual cause is. Dodged some bullets with some fire truck pieces and some breakdowns, and didn't have that across, that's a whole lot, so, uh, like I said, operational, uh, we're in the ballpark. From a, a financial perspective, um, just Duncan will hear me preach this over and over again, and then Trina does all the time as well. But just we need to be financially aware and mindful of, of what we're doing from even a reserve allocation perspective. When it comes to some of these bigger wants and asks, um, and just ties, Councilor Rabel ties, ties back to your question around what amount of asset management? And that's a great question, it's another age, infrastructure pieces and asset pieces within the village that need to be addressed. Um, and, uh, we need to be prioritizing improved around, we need to prioritize there. So having a solid five-year plan, fantastic, from a budget perspective here.
Yeah, well, that outfall, like, is an unknown cost, cause that's something that was replaced not that long ago. With engineering, working with a consultant that said, hey, this isn't so, I'm sure there's some, there's some avenues we can look at cost recovery on that potentially. Or, you know, put something that be aware of, you know, nice thing we've got some healthy reserves, but.
Yeah.
Cause that's kind of, kind of essential.
Yeah.
Cause I know in the past, there's been issues with that outfall where it led to the point where, you know, we were moving into regulatory fines if we didn't do something with it, right?
Yeah, no, and it has to be addressed, I, I get that, um.
That's the, that's the part of everything you said that scares me the most, is that unknown with that, with that sewer.
Yeah, the, the, financially, like, there's, yes, we have healthy reserves, like, there's no denying that. Reserves can't be set up forever, there's stuff that probably we need to spend before people start asking more questions, whether that's gas tax money or other things, right? Um, uh, there's numerous grants that are applied, were gotten each year that, that are, you know, designated to various items as well, that we need to, to be mindful of there too. Um, you know, from a financial perspective, if, if we've approved and adopted a budget that's pulling two hundred and some odd thousand reserves to cover that difference already. What are we, what are we doing to help to kind of mitigate that piece? And that's kind of what I keep preaching to Trina, and what, I don't know, you'll hear me preach as well, right, from a financial perspective.
Well, that's the thing, if you're spending more than you've got, it's gotta come from somewhere.
Yeah, oh, hundred percent, hundred percent, and so, but you, you can't hang on to what you got forever either. And so there, there is a balance there, I do recognize that, um, but, uh, we wanna be thoughtful around kind of directions that, that we, from a recommendation perspective, from a finance perspective. Right?
Oh, definitely.
Um, yeah, um, so to summarize, I guess, for everybody, um, financially, from projections from budget to where we're at currently, I would say we're, we're in a pretty decent place. We've had some, um, some pieces come our way that have helped offset that, such as the grant for the seniors' eighteen-place, that's kind of helping, uh, coming into play here. Um, and, but just wanna further be mindful of, and as we move forward into the fall and into kind of our long-term planning and strategic thinking around asset management and, and upgrading stuff within the village. What does that mean, kind of long-term for us?
I know, at least with the asset management plan now, we've, like you said, we've got that five-year outlook, we can say, okay, what are our priorities and start to prioritize.
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah. So that's what, kind of ideally, I'd like to obviously work with Duncan here, uh, and, and Trina over the next few months, just to highlight. As we move into budget season, what are two priorities for us, uh, from a village perspective, if we're? Cool, yeah, any question, other questions, comments? Yes.
Oh, no, I appreciate, I'm sorry. You didn't even call. There's always the assumption, I have something to say.
She got her thing, you wanna add?
No, everything sounds, sounds good, it was, it was all things I was expecting, so.
You have your time to think, take it.
No, well, no, I appreciate that, and it's good to hear that we're in a healthy position, and this is a mid-year look at it. Um, were, was candidate expenses included in this? Okay, so that's already in there, so even that's looking very reasonable. Um, yes, when, we've got a lot of reserves, that's helping us right now. Kind of a weird time in the economy, and we don't wanna get too jumpy. The other thing too is what I appreciate about the asset management plan is, it helps give us directions, we don't get too excited and start just going to the candy store, buying everything and then send. Um, you know, this is a village that's been here for a while, and there's some really aging things, and, uh, we're gonna have to replace them, and they're gonna be mighty expensive. Yeah, especially some sewer infrastructure, but I guess we'll get to that in the future.
I think Duncan and I were talking earlier, chasing shiny things obviously doesn't, uh, doesn't always work out great for you either, right? So it's just, just being, sometimes opportunities come up that we need to take advantage of, right? But it's true, be mindful of, kind of what, what, does that have from like a long-term financial piece there from a, from a village perspective, right?
Lots of there, you can put a lot of money into the ground, it'll be ever seasonal.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they sure as heck miss it when it's not there.
Yeah, right.
So.
My, the only other piece is that I really hope that when we're planning replacements of, say, a sewer line, that we're thinking of just that whole damn street at once. The most expensive thing is opening up the ground, we're thinking about leather and structure, okay, well, the road's being damaged, so we have to repave it, the sewer line, the water line, the water shut offs. Thinking of, if we're attacking one piece, we might as well fix it all, and drainage, all that. Instead of piecemealing it, or coming back, if we're gonna, you know, people have been in the village for a hundred years plus, you know, we wanna be here for a thousand years plus. Let's plan for that, and let's just take it block by block, honestly, I think that's the better way to go. It's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, alright. So all those in favor of receiving the C F L's report?
Aye.
So we're gonna move on to the C A O report, uh, so I'll turn it over to you Duncan, I know it's, it's only been a couple days, but.
Well, yes, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair, it's, uh, gonna be a shorter report than Josh's every day, but I just wanted to, uh, make sure that I was on, uh, to give you folks a little bit of a emphasis of what I've been prioritizing. So I think first couple of days in trying to, uh, I think I've made appointments with all the staff so far, just to have the one-on-one relationships with each other. I think that's, uh, pretty crucial to developing, you know, a good sense of what's, uh, possible and what's not possible. Um, so those are, uh, you know, some of them have already started, some of them are ongoing, uh, I think some of the last ones I have are, uh, I think Tuesday next week. Um, there's a number of, uh, larger files, uh, you know, project-related files that, uh, on the desk there that I'm, uh, sinking my teeth into as well. Um, some with, uh, some pretty intricate histories, so I'm looking into the project management-related, uh, aspects, um, internally, externally, uh, on those as well. I'm just making sure that the teams that are, uh, are set up are successful. Um, another thing is, uh, capacity, you know, I don't wanna, in this role, you know, set up, you know, bad expectations or say, oh, yes, here we go, all of the stars, you know, yes to everything. I, I do wanna, you know, at least get some, you know, measurements together on the different tasks that are being expressed by council, identified internally. Try to measure that against the, uh, the staff that we have, and see what current priorities are in the running. And, you know, get, uh, those directions on, you know, where those priorities lie. Just wanna be realistic with, uh, you know, where we're at, uh, in this, this term, where we're at in this year or so. Um, one other note, uh, we were talking about just a staff meeting this morning, um, because some wood chipping, we're gonna be needing a composting area next week. Uh, we did, I believe, post on social media today that, uh, the composting area is gonna be closed, uh, just for a couple of days until we're finished with all that chipping. Uh, so just a heads up, uh, to the public on that. Um, I know that, uh, there's probably been some anticipation on painting work, uh, to be done as well, if you're watching. Uh, that's, uh, we, we did land a conversation with a contractor earlier this week, and we're just, uh, looking to, uh, see if we can match, uh, their, their stipulations for, uh, for, it's like, uh, prior to this. So that's something that we're pursuing pretty aggressively. And what else do I have here? I'll keep it, I'll keep it high level, uh, for now, if that's alright, but hopefully maybe there's more.
Right on, two days into the job, already got a list for us. Alright, so all those in favor of, uh, receiving the C A O's report?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright, uh, thirteen point two, RCMP, uh, Plinster Report, um, for July, I'll get a second on that.
Is that good?
Uh, all those in favor receiving for information?
Alright.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna move on to fourteen, so council reports, uh, Councilor Johnston is away tonight with notice, so no report for him, uh, Councilor Wall?
Sure, thank you, um, alright, I, I appreciate the opportunity to share my report. Um, I'd like to welcome Duncan, uh, to the Village of Poo Scoopy, and I wish him the best of success in his interim role. Um, there's a lot of exciting things, we've got many plates spinning, that's for sure. And honestly, we're excited to get a lot of them over the hill, but it's the eternal project. You know, we'll get those boulders up the hill, but by golly, we've got some more boulders waiting. The other piece was on July, somewhere around July twenty-third, twenty-fourth, I attended a museum meeting with, uh, fellow councillors and mayor. Um, essentially that was at the seniors' hall, the long and the short, and I sent my takeaways by email, so everyone's got that now. Uh, essentially the Poo's museum has some money set aside for a digital advertising board. Um, we're, they're thinking of various locations within the village that they'd like to mount it. Uh, they'd like to not only have it for their community events, but also share that opportunity of public advertisement with other community organizations. Um, the village, they essentially were quite, uh, willing to have the village be kind of the host, uh, or the coordinator, let's say. Of various inquiries to have advertisements displayed on this board. And it sounds like the village may need to engage with the school district in regards to potentially having the sign put on the wall of the school. Where there once was a digital advertising board, uh, looking at the signage bylaw. You couldn't have it stick above the roof line, um, wondering if we'd need to complete a sign permit, I know that's super niche. Um, then the agreement between the village and the school district in regards to the community center. Um, it's wondering about whoever installs this asset. Um, there's sections of the agreement that say that it's most likely gonna be the school district's asset then, that it, by default becomes. Um, but then, how much control will the village have in it? Long and the short is, essentially, there are some, as we proceed in this conversation with the museum and potentially the school district, or in other locations within the municipality. We've gotta consider, you know, who's in charge of what, where can we put it, who's comfortable with what, hashing out those agreements. Because essentially, what the contractor from Grand Prairie was talking about with the sign, is that you can have, um, it have connection to internet, it have connection to electricity. If we did the baseball diamonds, you're trenching a big power line over there, you're putting in screw piles, the whole shebang. Those are expenditures that, who's covering that, who's doing what? My hope out of all of this, the sign is placed somewhere where it's visible, and that, um, bring of charge, community groups can come through the village office and advert, uh, ask for what's that, you know, there had to be put up on this sign. I'd love to see that, I think it's a wonderful idea, I'm appreciative that the museum's spearheading this, and that they're, by the way, the village should be engaged with it. I think it's a wonderful thing, other than that, um, there's been other things going on, but, uh, not that moves forward in my role as a counselor, that's decent.
Alright, thanks, sir. Uh, Councilor Wall is away tonight with notice, uh, for myself, yeah, I attended the, uh, meeting with the, uh, uh, seniors' hall as well. Uh, and yeah, that's about all I've really got up to this last, uh, uh, this last little bit, I'm chasing kids all over the place for fall fair. Alright, so it brings us to Mayor Beach, uh, do you have a report for us tonight, Mayor Beach?
Yeah, no, I've got my report here, um, Mr. Malkinson, I will type this up and send it to you, cause it, they're really quite lengthy, and so I'll save you some time. Um, so on July twenty-fourth, I attended the meeting with the museum at the seniors' hall regarding the digital sign. Um, on, uh, and then throughout that, I was also sort of doing a bit of the C A O stuff while we were waiting for Mr. Malkinson to join us, I'm very happy that he's down here, thank you so much. Um, I've already been working around the office, attending staff meetings, um, and then, uh. I, I've mainly been in the office, hang on, scrolling through my, my phone, the joys. Uh, I, I attended a regulatory water update, um, regarding just water and the drought within the province that we're currently seeing up north. Um, as many of you, you know, Dawson Creek has declared a stage two, um, water restriction due to the severe droughts that we've been having. Um, on August sixth, I attended a mayor and chairs meeting update as well, which is on wildfire. Um, I've been working with staff, I sadly did not make it to the inventive barbecue, I wasn't even feeling well, so I didn't wanna get everybody sick. Um, I attended, um, meetings with N D I T regarding our intern, Mr. Ho in the office. Um, and then I took part in the fall fair, um, through my Peace for a Regional District Act, which was a lot of fun. And then Saturday, I did the Race Against Hunger with Poo's Kapi Food Bank, which was always quite successful and a really, really great time. And then this week, I'm, I've got a bunch of different stuff going. And then this week, I'm, I've got a bunch of different stuff going, going on to my phone. It's so cool, I can really keep track of everything I'm saying. So I'm just, I'm super, super busy working in the office. I'm so happy to see Mr. Melkerson in helping us. Um, I'd like to give a big shout out to the Puscoopy Museum for putting their float in the fall fair parade. They did a wonderful job. They had the train and the trestle and the miniature museum again. And it looked absolutely beautiful. It's always a big fan favorite. So thank you so much to them for always um showing up for these community events and um giving some representation to the village of Puscoopy. So thank you to the, the village Puscoopy museum staff. They did, they did a wonderful job.
Alright, uh councillor.
Thank you for the report, Mayor. Um, I, I was reminded through the mayor's reports that I did attend the Oventive, uh, the Oventive tent at the fall fair and, you know, some facilities at the fall fair. Um, appreciative to Oventive for the invitation.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to question period. There's nobody here tonight, so no whole lot of questions. Alrighty, uh number six, or I guess item number sixteen, uh we're gonna move to in camera. As per section ninety-one C of the community charter, recommendation that council closes the meeting to the public pursuant to section ninety-one C of the community charter as the subject matter relates to labor relations and other employee relations. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
One second. Alright, and yeah, we're gonna move into opposed.